Start with the call to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marie, please have roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here. Thank you, Marie. Next we'll have our student representative report. Emily?
Okay, so I have a lot this month. And musical was this past weekend. It was really good. Everybody went in. It was really funny. Graduation's coming up. Our order pickup is this Wednesday on the 9th. Speeches are being written. And Mr. Glado will be our faculty speaker for graduation. Distracted driving week is the week right after spring break, which is the 21st through 25th. On the 24th, we'll have two speakers coming in. One is a man who killed two people when distracted driving. And then the other one is a high school senior whose brother was killed from a distracted driver. And it sounds like these are two really good speakers. So we're excited to have them. And then there's events planned for every day of the week. Some of them are secret right now, so. The Japanese quiz in Milwaukee, there was two teams at place. There's a nice little article in the newspaper about that. Parent-teacher visitation is on the 28th. National Honor Society induction is on the 30th. And this past month sophomores were given Smarties because of their plan test scores, because they're some of the highest scores that we've ever had as a high school. Student council elections were held last week. And inductions will be this Thursday, the 10th. And state student council is 27th through 28th of April. And our projects are coming along. And then prom will be May 3rd.
Excellent. We went to play the other night. It was a wonderful performance. Enjoyed it a great deal. So thank you for your report, Emily. Next, we can move on to the minutes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of March 10. And the special Board of Education meeting minutes close session of March 10.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes from March 10, 2014, as well as the special Board of Education meeting minutes of March 10, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, do we have any comments from citizens tonight?
No.
Okay, we can move on to committee reports. John, Business Services?
Thank you, John. The Business Services Committee was called to order at 6:00 PM. And we had originally four consent agenda items, but only three made it to the board meeting. I guess I would like to just say that I would like to remind the public that we do have two meetings a month. The first meeting is the board, the committee meetings. And that's where a lot of the discussions and information about brought to this meeting happens. So that's where it'd be very nice if we could have those televised, because there's a lot of discussion, a lot of debate. And some of the bills, not bills, some of the motions brought forward don't make it out of the committee or are sent back for revisions. And that's where the discussion comes before it gets to the board meeting, where we have the actual vote to approve it. So this week, we had three consent agenda items. Actually, two of them were from the previous month that were bounced back. And then they made it forward with the changes for this, for this meeting. Does anybody want anything held out before I start? Okay. Hearing nothing to be held out. But our first one was the 2014-2015 Lincoln High School trade home selection. Glad to see that we had one person that brought through with their financial package and was accepted. We did have two, another one interested, but they didn't follow through with the paperwork. So we did make the approach, the motion to approve for construction of a house with Ronald and Deborah Bone. And it's located on Loghome Lane for approval toward the, for the Board of Education. Our second item is Policy 751.21, Use of Electronic Surveillance Technology on a School Bus for First Reading. And that has to do with the technology as far as recording on buses. The second one follows it. It's 731.2, Use of Electronic Surveillance Technology in public areas of the school buildings and property for first reading. And that's the same thing as far as what we had bounced it back for was wording to cover the adult or 18-year-old students or seniors that we have. So that there's some wording in there too for the parents to view things if they needed to. And then the last item, which didn't make, which we sent back, the committee sent back and tabled is a maritime purchase for software that would be used as a time clock. Some of the issues were is that the cost of 97,000, ah, 96,000, 9,075 annually was, seemed a little bit high. And we just wanted it looked at and wanted some information to compare to. So it was brought, sent back to the administration to come back with some more information and see if we can get some fees cut out of it. One of the discussions in the committee was that it was not really for all of the employees since all of our majority, I don't know what the percentage is, but I would say it's over half of our people's salaries. So they don't use a time clock. So I think it's probably in proportion to 60,000 or 60,000 people are not on time clock. So we did have some questions. And I'm looking for some answers. So that's why we're not bringing that forward for tonight's meeting. So I would make a motion to approve the three consent agenda items brought forward for vote tonight.
Second.
Is motion of second to approve BS 1, BS 2, and BS 3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are approved.
Okay, and then we, the balance of our meeting was a purchases review. And we looked at some bills for the invoices for the virtual curriculum and occupational services that we have in the district. And then with that, I submit the balance of meetings for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve the meeting minutes of March 31, 2014 for the Business Service Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, John. Next, we can move on to the Personnel Services. Sandy?
Personnel met last, our last what? Whatever, it was Monday, March 31 at 6:00 PM. There was no public comment. And from that meeting, we have three consent agenda items, and they are as follows. If you look at your agenda, you'll see that a couple of names have little asterisks in front of them. Those are names that were first brought to the meeting because they didn't make it in time to get on the agenda. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three professional staff early retirements and the three professional staff resignations. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff early retirements. And the third consent agenda item, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff resignations.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second to approve PS 1, 2, and 3 from the Personnel Service Committee meeting of March 31, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And with that, I move that the minutes of the March 31 meeting be approved as printed.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the minutes from the Personnel Service Committee meeting of March 31, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Sandy. Next, we have Ed Services. Ann?
Thanks, John. Our meeting was held again last Monday, March 31. And there was no public comment. We have five consent agenda items. And does anyone want any of those held out? We'll go on to the elementary science curriculum. And Kathy Stevens-Hins, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, introduced Dave Bergerson, Science Coordinator, to review the status of the science curriculum. In doing so, she announced that Dave was recently presented with the Wisconsin Society of Science Teachers Excellence in Science Education Award. And Dave explained steps the Science CII Subcommittee and several subcommittees of grade-level teachers have been taking to align the next-generation science standards with the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools science curriculum. He shared how the committees are mapping standards and selecting the best materials to support the instruction. Several teachers are piloting materials and providing feedback to the committee to help with the selection of materials. National geographic materials are a very popular choice because of the unitized texts. It was further noted by Mr. Bergerson that some texts currently being used will continue to be used. He also explained the addition of one engineering unit at each grade level. Teachers are currently piloting the Engineering is Elementary program to support these units. Mrs. Hett asked several questions about the NGSS. And Mr. Bergerson explained that the NGSS were not dictated by the federal government. And material choices to support the NGSS are being made at the local level. Our second consent agenda items involved youth options requests. And Trudy DeSimon was present to summarize the student applications for youth options requests. There are a total of four students who applied for the first semester of the 2014-15 school year. Trudy mentioned that there were two other students who applied for youth options, but new guidelines require applicants for technical college courses to have a 3.0 GPA. And these students did not meet the new requirement, and so were denied. Our third consent agenda item was grant approval request. And Ms. Stevens-Hins reviewed the nine grant requests submitted by WRPS staff. John Bembel commended the staff for the time and effort taken to write and apply for these grants. Our first grant was for the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction Spotlight School Continuation Grant for 2014-15 for Howe Elementary School in the amount of $25,000. The second one was the STEM DPI grant in the amount of $25,000. The third one was MEAT Elementary Charter School and United Way of Inner Wisconsin Women's Leadership Council Learning for Life Reading Mentor Ad Campaign at the amount of $5,000. And then we heard about the Read to Lead Development Fund Grants. The first one was at MEAT Elementary Charter School 4K Royal Readers for $2,000. Second one was MEAT Elementary Charter School MEAT Reads Summer Programming for $9,000. And the third one, WRPS Doors to Discovery Literacy Program, Further Developing Literacy in, there's a hole in my.
4K.
In 4K? Okay. For the amount of $36,640. The fifth one was the 25th, oh, yeah, the fifth, okay. The fifth one was the 25th, 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant for MEAT Elementary School in the amount of $50,000. Sixth one, the United Way of Inner Wisconsin Grant for Before and After School Club MEAT at $83,000. And the last one was McCarthy-Dressman Education Academic Enrichment Grant for Howe School in the amount of $30,000. And that means $10,000 per year for three years. Then we went on to Board Policy 345.11, Procedures for Academic Excellence Scholarships for the First Reading. Kathy reviewed changes to Policy 345.11. The policy is used to determine recipients of the academic excellence scholarships, particularly in cases where more students qualify by GPA than there are available scholarships. We went on to Board Policy 443.3, Smoking and/or Use of Tobacco or Nicotine Products by Students. Board Policy 522.2, Smoking or Use of Tobacco or Nicotine Products by Employees. And Board Policy 831, Smoking and/or Use of Tobacco and Nicotine Products on School Premises for the First Reading. Ms. Stevens-Hins reviewed requested changes to the three policies. Policies have been changed to include nicotine products. This change is necessary because of the growing popularity of e-cigarettes. Sandy Hett requested clarification on Policy 831 and whether debarment was being used correctly. Ms. Dickman, our superintendent, stated it would be reviewed prior to the full Board of Education meeting. And with that, the committee recommends and I move approval of the five consent agenda items.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve ES 1 through 5. Can we please have roll call, Marie?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
Thank you, Marie. Can I just ask a question? Because on ES 3, the grant applications, those are just applications. Do we have any updates as to whether any of those grants have been approved? Or do we all have? Yes. I just want people to understand they're applications, not that we got all these grants brought in. Yeah. Right.
Okay, then we went on to updates. And the first one was on Educator Effectiveness System. And Ms. Stevens-Hins presented a PowerPoint to explain the educator effectiveness system that will be implemented with the 2014-15 school year. She explained the purpose and components of the program, as well as what the district has already done to bring implementation. Several questions were raised by the board members, including concerns for staff time. And actually, that was the only one. So with that, the committee recommends and I move adoption of the minutes of the March 31 Education Services Committee meeting.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the meeting minutes from the Ed Services Committee meeting of March 31, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ann. Next, we can move on to Agenda Referrals and Information Requests. Anybody have anything to make? Okay. Next on our agenda is Conversation with Assembly Representative Amy Sue Bruwink. Welcome.
Thank you. This is hon. You can be loud, but I just love it. That helps. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening with you. And I always like it when it's a conversation instead of a Spanish Inquisition. I like that. That's always helpful. It's great to be back in Wisconsin Rapids to be here with you. I appreciated last time that you, when you had a number of us legislators, that it was really helpful to have dialogue and to give feedback to see what we're doing in Madison and how it affects our school districts back home. And we try to do that and keep an open dialogue because it's important for myself to make sure what I'm doing is no harm for our school districts. That's key. The last, our legislative wrap-up has happened now. We're done unless there comes a photo ID that they would, that would pass constitutional muster. So right now, we're looking at not going back into legislative session. So our session has ended. With a number of things we tried to do at the end, we tried to pull a number of bills that didn't get hearings, especially when it comes to education legislation. And some of that was loan forgiveness. I tried to pull that bill on the last day of the session and try to get some support so that we can get teachers to teach in rural districts who have a smaller population. And that would affect the Wisconsin Rapids school districts with some of the schools that we have here. That it would have been helpful for, especially Wisconsin Rapids and some of my other districts, and one of my 13 school districts across central, western Wisconsin. It would have helped them out. But we tried to do some initiatives that were saving and preserving public education. We have a constitutional responsibility to provide a free education for all of our children. And the focus has been mainly on privatization of our schools and allowing the voucher schools to come in and kind of take over. We want to make sure that there's transparency, accountability for every school. I don't care if it's a voucher or a public school, but if we in the public sector have to abide by all these rules and regulations, these new voucher schools should be as well. We felt very strongly about that. However, there is still a tipping part where they're not making them as accountable. And as you read in the paper, when the school closed in Milwaukee and headed down to Florida, they took our taxpayer dollars. I had drafted a bill that said that you'd have to pay back our money, that you'd have to give it back to taxpayers and pay back the money that you've gotten. But obviously, that was going nowhere in this legislative session. So I just feel if we're going to have standards for our public education, it should be across the board for all the schools. And so they shouldn't be carved out and have special exemptions for themselves when we have, in the public education, have so many more regulations to abide by.
Could you talk a little bit about what those exemptions are?
Well, background checks. I mean, some of the things for the vouchers. Right. There is background checks for some of them, making sure there's equitable funding for our school, for every student. And now with the, some of the special vouchers that they wanted to do for different, for getting more money for their schools, that they wanted to have a cutout. And we don't exactly get vouchers for our public schools, so they can get exemptions cut out. So those were some of them. I'm trying to think of, there was just so much at the end. And it's really, I'm glad this is a conversation, so please ask questions. Thank you, Colleen, for asking. But there was, we just had a number of issues with what was happening with, and during this time, the Common Core standards came out, and people were talking about that. And there was a lot of misconceptions in the media, as well as a talk in the general public. And so I had sent a letter to professionals in public education and telling them that I stood by the Common Core standards, that this is good for all of our students, and that politicians should not be trying to meddle into this business and let it up to you, all the professionals in the field of education. And not a bunch of lawmakers who are trying to appease a certain contributor or political party. And so that was something that was, actually Representative Steve Castile, who was the chairman of the Education Committee, did a good job, I thought. He was fair about doing some of the things that he had stopped bad legislation from coming through. Even worse, I mean, there was not a lot of good stuff that came through, but it could have been much worse, believe it or not, in the Education Committee. But unfortunately, he's now retiring and going to enjoy his private life now. So we don't know what to have an education-wise in the Education Committee. Trying to think of, there's a whole bunch of stuff that.
Well, then you need to get out that one, right?
Pardon? Get out, you know, something? If that's what you'd like me to do, I work for the people. Like, that's a very good suggestion. I should get out of the Education Committee. It was, we had the Rural Schools Task Force, which some of my colleagues, Mandy Wright from Wasau, probably the closest one, and well, my closest neighbor in Trumbull County, served on the Rural Task Force. And they, they're rather disappointed because they heard from school districts, especially rural school districts across the state saying, we have these needs. We don't have enough money. We have to go to referendum just to operate. You know, what can you do? Can you ease up on some of this? And it was basically, it was a show. And none of those policies came. And maybe they still will, maybe next, after January, maybe they will. But right now, it was, it was a showing of just, you know, yep, we're going to go around the state and look like we're really doing something. Unfortunately, they do anything. And those are the schools that are struggling the most. And not to say all of our school districts, because they are across the state of Wisconsin. When you have to go to referendum for operating costs, well, that doesn't say a lot. It doesn't say that we're investing in our future. So I don't know if that's.
Well, what it says is that the funding formula was broken, and we need to have, and we talked about that with, when Scott was here and then when Julie was here, we talked about it, the same thing, is that somebody down there's got to start taking the bull by the horns. You know, it's not going to be popular, but somebody's got to do it because, I don't know, they could make five more years before it crashes and burns.
And I think there's a move to that. I really do. I think the intention at the state level is unfortunately to privatize a lot of schools. They think that you combine school districts. And in my, my school district of Aubredale, my five-year-old gets on, and she's on for over an hour. And if we were to talk about combining more of these school districts, you're going to have kids on the bus, you know, maybe two hours. And you know, when I get her up at 6:00 and said, okay, let's eat, she really, you know, wait to, she waits to go to school and buys lunch at school for breakfast in the morning. But we're going to be doing that. I mean, you get to look at the sparsity, sparsity aid. You have to look at, I mean, there, we did have a legislative study, and actually, I sat on it a number of years ago. And we had school districts like, Park Falls came down. They talked about it. I mean, you had schools in western Wisconsin who are gaining, this is one, we were really seeing a lot of declining enrollment. And they were gaining enrollment. And around Nina, Manasha, Appleton area, they were gaining. But for the rest, everybody else was shrinking. And they're saying, you know, how are we still going to provide the same quality education with declining enrollments? But the number, and then people would, from, especially in their area, they have a lot of out-of-state landowners who would take out giant ads in the local papers and say, you know, we don't need to, we don't need to be spending this money. You know, we, this is money we don't have. They should be more careful of the money. And all it is, is a detriment to our kids. So, but we tried to do a legislative council study. And when you try to articulate it, there's very few people in the whole state there's very few people in the whole state who can really explain the school funding formula very well, so everybody can understand it, there's just an handful. And I always ask Bob Lane from our Fiscal Bureau, if he'll send some folks up, because when people say, "Aim to just fix it." I love just to fix it, if that's all I had to do was just fix it. But every time you change one thing, it's a ripple effect through, I mean, it's like throwing a rock at a pond and it just ripples of all the things that it touches and all messes up something else. So, it's more than just fixing it. I wish I could just fix it. But we need ideas and we're here to listen and, you know, whatever it might take, and maybe it's gonna take more Legislative Council studies. And those are, those have already been taken into consideration for this year, but it is something that needs to be worked on. Because I look at our school districts, my Toma School District passed their referendum for operational, but there's school districts all across the state that, as you saw on election night, that they're going to referendum. And it just says that, you know, "At the state level, we're being irresponsible." In my eyes, when it says, "We're gonna give you a tax cut, but in the end, when we pass the buck down to other local units of government, such as school districts, we're saying, 'Well, we're cutting your funding off, but now we're gonna ask you to go to taxpayers to pay more.'" So, you know, it's about truth and, about the truth of what you're trying to say is that we're just gonna pass the buck. It's gonna sound good at the state level, but we're just passing the buck to local units of government to raise revenues. Or raise taxes, let's just be honest, raise taxes. And nobody likes that.
Yeah, the legislators understand that how many consecutive years we've been asked to cut, and millions every year we're being asked to cut and cut and cut and cut. I mean, do they get that? Do they know that? I mean, it's like, they don't get it, like, they don't know.
I think that was disappointing for a number of our members on the, on the whole Rural Schools Task Force. Because they would hear what the schools were saying and they'd say, "Okay, well, let's try to do sparsity, let's try to do loan forgiveness, because no one wants to go to a rural area, because young people wanna go where it's exciting and there's things to do and culture and arts and, and nobody wants to do that, so why don't we try to help them?" Because they can't, I mean, one of my school districts, the starting teacher makes 30,000. If you talk about you're living away from home, you have to have an apartment, you make your car insurance, your car payment, you have, you know, there's all the, your student loan payment, which is a whole nother thing that we're trying to deal with, there was no real feedback. They just nodded their heads and, "Oh, well." And I don't know what it's gonna take, but I really feel like there is a war on public education. That they, people dislike public education in the state legislature. And for them to do that is a good way to dismantle it when you're trying to fund two separate school systems. You have the vouchers you're trying to fund with public tax dollars, and then you have our public education, which we're constitutionally required to do. And so you can't fund both of them.
I'd say there's three. You see, still throw in the charter schools in there too.
Right.
So you've got three you're trying to fund and you can't fund one sufficiently yet.
And I, you know, some of the public charters, you know, are trying to get around some of the things that the legislature has put in place. You know, the legislature, I mean, I'm always willing to say, "Okay, let's pull back and let's reevaluate what we've done." And if it doesn't work and we're not funding it, need special education. I mean, well, we're supposed to be funding two-thirds education or not. And so what does that do? It places a greater burden to all of you. And when taxpayers are saying, "Well, why can't we have this program? Why can't we have that program? You know, what am I getting for my money?" And you're saying, "Well, these are the requirements the state and the federal government require us to do." And I'm not saying blow it all up, but I think we have to have a serious talk about it and say, you know, "These are things that we can do, but under these constraints, there's a number of things we can't do anymore."
Talking about studies, it seems to me there's been a significant change with Act 10. Someone should be studying whether it's successful or not. And if it's not successful, an objective body should be studying it. And if it's not working, they should be saying that it's not working.
That's a good point, Larry. And I will, I will take that back. I know that they just did an interview with the governor and he said, a couple months ago, they did a survey and over 70% of the people think that it was a good idea. And actually, it was going back more than a couple months, it was a couple of years. And it was, and it was just, that was a broad statement made by him. People say, "Yep, everybody should be able to get a little bit more, pay a little bit more for health insurance." But people did not always agree with taking away everybody's rights across the board. And that the people, you should have give and take. And that's what collective bargaining is, if somebody's giving up something to get something, but that wasn't presented that way. And I think that collective bargaining hurt us more so, especially in rural areas. I guess I'm biased, because that's my entire district, is that it's harder for us to recruit and retain talented people. If you're not from a big city, Milwaukee, and Milwaukee has their own set of issues, absolutely, but they have more things to do, they have more access to public transit to get people to and from work, there's just a lot more opportunities that they have to retain and get people to, wanna to teach.
Well, if you're talented and you're really good and you're in a small urban or rural school, you can make more money in the cities.
Right.
That's one way to get a raise. And you don't wanna lose those people and the quality that they bring to the smaller schools.
And we're hearing time and time again from the University of Wisconsin, that number of campuses are seeing their education enrollment is 50%, they're losing, they're 20%, "I wanna be an educator, forget it." No, I have to, I talked to a principal over in the Sparta School District and told his daughter, he's like, "She wanna go into education." And he, both him and his wife were in education and he's a principal, and he said, "Don't do it." He's like, "Go be a doctor." He's like, "If you wanna be able to survive, instead of trying to make ends meet every day, he's like, "Go into medicine, don't go into education." And I said to him, "That must have been hard, or you will tell your own daughter not to follow in your footsteps." And he said, "It's very difficult." He said, "But do I want her to struggle?" And he's like, "We're still, we're still struggling and trying to help her with her schooling." He's like, "We just can't do it." And when you hear stories like that, that regular general public doesn't hear, I think it's important to tell the stories for other people, because they don't wanna exactly share that, they're not exactly proud that they're just trying to...
Why don't they hear it?
I think that the atmosphere and the whole, the whole, after Act 10, it really divided Wisconsin. And so if you work for a public entity in the state of Wisconsin, you are really looked down upon as a taker and not a giver. And if you don't value public workers, and after Act 10 happened, people didn't value public work. It could be the public work from outkeeping our roads, maintaining our roads, to a school teacher, to anybody who worked for in the public sector, was pretty much looked down upon. I don't care if you're a correction officer in one of our state facilities, that I talked to correction officers and they said the inmates could tell that we are no longer valued. And so it was easier for them to take advantage of correctional officers in our state penitentiaries. And because they said, "Well, they don't value public edu, uh, public work, period." But when, for public education especially, it was a war on, it was a war on teachers. And saying they had it too good for so long. And, and I had a, had a discussion with a constituent that thought that collective bargaining was the safe for every school district. He thought one person negotiated for all the school districts in the state of Wisconsin. And I said, "That's not true." I said, "Every school district has their own collective bargaining unit." And he said, "That's not true." And I said, "It is true."
And all that, we add insurance to, you know?
Right, yeah. That's not true either, so, right. But, but that was a public perception. And nobody, I mean, in Wisconsin, we come from a background where we're proud of who we are, but we're not overly proud, where we wanna toot our own horn. And some of the wonderful things that public education does and public workers do in general, they're proud to do it, they're proud to be in the profession they're in, but nobody ever wants to say, "Yay, look at me, I did a really good job with a student," or "I spent extra time." Nobody ever wants to say that. And just because that you're proud and you just don't want to be, in other words, bragging about what you did, but now it comes to the point where it's like, you're gonna have to talk about what you did and the extra hours you spent doing whatever it is and not getting paid for it. You do it because you love it and that's your passion and that's what you wanted always to do. And so many times that people look at the money and not look at the passion, and we're losing the passion for education. And I don't want us to fall further down behind other states when it comes to our testing and our scores and everything is measured, but if we don't attract and retain good people, we're only hurting ourselves in the long run.
Another inequity is that public schools take all students.
Correct.
Some of those are pretty expensive. So how do you, what do you do about that?
Senator Schilling had introduced a special, social education funding for that, for do more grants for special education, because it's very expensive. And unfortunately, her bill didn't go anywhere, but we heard, when we're holding office hours, we heard from a number of families, like Kate, and said, "You know, something is really hard, but we want our student in public education. They have the best tools, they have the best opportunities there to help them." And, but, you know, we are seeing that it's very expensive and the people, that's another thing that people always don't understand. It's like, "Well, we have federal requirements and state requirements for children with special needs." And school, public schools have to take all children, we don't cherry pick, we take all students. But that's another misconception in, in the public that, "Well, why don't they just say, 'No, they can't take them?'" No, because we have to give every student, as you all know, the equal opportunity for education.
So could I go back to the privatization conversation you were having? Do you have conversation down at the Capitol regarding that in the sense that, I'm still trying to figure out what the end result is going to be? If all schools privatize, you still need educators in classrooms with kids and somebody has to pay for it. So what is the difference? I, I'm not clear on what the difference is going to be, because people aren't going to work for nothing.
Right.
Do you have conversation about...
Try to have conversation about privately, privatize all the state of Wisconsin public education.
So privatize it and what's that gonna get us, other than we still have kids who need education? We need an educator in every classroom and we need good ones in, in the classroom to keep our, to keep us where we're at.
Right.
I mean, I just, I...
We try to have these conversations, we bring these up, whether it's, you know, in another committee about whatever it is to privatize and say, "Well, they can do it cheaper, they can do it better." But you bring up the exact point we make, is that nobody will work for nothing.
No, people are...
I mean, you can't have that. And if you want people who are passionate and very good at their job to inspire kids so they actually learn, you're gonna have to pay them. Because as much as they love it, they still have to make the student loans and still have to put food on the table and still make their car payments or their house payments or apartments.
And who would be required to take the special needs students?
It's a good question.
There's a whole group of kids that would fall through the cracks and they're talking about no check, well, the no child left behind, but, you know, you talk about the free and reduced rates that we have in public schools and the poverty rates, I mean, we have, eight is what, 75%?
Seventy, seventy.
Seventy-seven percent? Eighty percent?
I think it's eighty.
Eighty percent free and reduced or poverty level, you know, and it's, it's just, it amazes, you know, when I first got on the board, when we were talking about that, some of these numbers came up, it just shocked me. I mean, I just didn't realize we had that much poverty, even in this community of Wisconsin Rapids, because you don't think about it. But going back to the privatization question, what teacher in the private sector is gonna come in, what person will come and work for $30,000?
Right.
They aren't.
Or what families can afford to send their kids to private education?
That's what the funny part is, is that, you know, when they talk about these voucher schools and that one that failed, they were paying teachers $75,000.
And where's that gone?
And they're, and they were complaining about what we were paying, it took our teachers almost 30 years to get the $75,000 or more. I mean, 30 years and the, the, you know, the teachers that you lose, you know, it's, teachers get into teaching, it's not for the money. I mean, they're, they will tell you that. I got, my wife's a teacher and I...
But you wanna make a living wage.
But they wanna make a decent wage and you wanna be able to, you know, educate yourself because, face it, most of the time, if you educate yourself, and I can't imagine, I know my wife spends easily 500 to $1,000 a year on stuff that, you know, you get a tax write-off, but she does it because she needs it in the classroom and she can't get it through the school district.
Okay, through the school district, a lot of parents don't have the money to buy it either.
Yeah, calculators and...
You see that more and more.
Batteries and that type of thing and learning aids.
Plenixes and Clorox wipes, the whole list.
Several of us went to that legislative breakfast, do you think Urban Box's suggestion of, of getting it off the property tax bill and funding it differently? I think he was suggesting sales tax, I think you were maybe at that meeting. Is that getting, is there any traction there?
No, because, I mean, right now, they're looking at just getting rid of, I mean, one of the proposals for the governor is that he would like to get rid of the income tax. Well, that, you know, where, where are we gonna go if we get rid of our income tax? I mean, we're gonna, what are you gonna tax to make up for the services we still have to provide? And so, I mean, when they talk about, you know, upping it a penny or a sales tax or what have you, that, I don't, any increase of revenue is dead on arrival.
Well, Texas has no income tax, but their sales taxes are anywhere from 10 to 12%.
And I wouldn't say their schools are very good either.
No.
Well, my fear is it's a race to the bottom. You know, if we devalue education to the point that we can't get quality people to come to work, we see it at Brywork. We've taken jobs that were previously done by company employees and we outsource them. They pay people barely minimum wage, they're in and out, in and out, in and out. It's a constant succession of new employees coming in through the door. You don't get any continuity, the job's not getting done well, it's getting done cheap. Well, that's not what education should be. This isn't cleaning a bathroom, this is educating youth, and I hope the public understands that.
It's an investment for the long term. I mean, and it's an investment for, for their life, but for ours as well and for the success and health of our communities. I mean, if we don't have children who are well-adjusted, well-educated, we're only hurting ourselves. And when people get mad and say, "Well, they, you know, we don't want kids who are gonna be uneducated at, you know, when I'm in my nursing home," and I'll say, "Okay, that's good." So then you really wanna, you know, wanna invest our kids and that means paying taxes. And, you know, but there's a disconnect about paying taxes and about what that investment, it's an investment, what that gets you. And that gets you long-term success. If you're investing in programs and opportunities for kids, then we're keeping them out of corrections. And then we're not putting, you know, the $40,000 a year on corrections, I mean, per inmate. It's more expensive if you're a woman, that is $60-some thousand dollars to incarcerate and to cheat on. And, you know, if we're investing on the front end with our kids, but people just, they're saying, "Well, we don't, the public education system is broken." I keep saying, everything breaks if you keep taking from it. I mean, you have a pie and you keep taking from it, everybody keeps eating it, there's no pie left, because everybody is taking from it. But if we reinvest in it, keep building our structure, I mean, Wisconsin has been known for our educational system. And it's sad to see that all these, you know, all these new proposals, whether it's taking the pulse of, after their jump roping and saying, "Well, that's government interference. We don't wanna, we don't wanna tell a kid how to take their pulse to see what their heart rate is." I mean, we're getting way out of whack of what we need to be doing. I mean, we should be talking about healthy eating, healthy lifestyles and, and teaching kids that, so they can take care of themselves, personal responsibility, self-reliance. Those are good things that we teach. And, but we're not seeing, we're seeing some, some legislation that has no business being in, at the state Capitol, let alone being forced on our school districts.
Something that I've heard before, and this is what I've seen, that's, in my opinion, I mean, I understand that, you know, the money is a difficult topic, but in the past several years, I think one of the greater damages has been done to the morale of our teachers, just because of the way they've been treated. And I think that it's really important that even if financially, I mean, that's a different discussion, but you can still treat people with respect. And that's something that hasn't been happening for our teachers and for our, like you said, public workers. I don't know how we can, I don't know when exactly it all shifted, I don't think it was necessarily Act 10. I think that, you know, there was a shift before that, where people were losing this respect, where teachers before were had, were seen as something of value. And now you look at the teachers and people almost look at them with disdain, and I don't understand where that's coming from. And I think that that's something that needs to be discussed and needs to be, we need to do something about that. Our teachers deserve respect and it needs to start at the top.
You know, there are other consequences of Act 10 that aren't dollars and cents, that's where we had a chance to sit with staff and learn. And they could learn from us, we could learn from them, but there were things that we could do that didn't have a dollar value attached to them, that would make their work environment better, that didn't cost any money. And now we're not allowed to even talk about those things.
Yep.
That's terrible.
And we did win-win bargaining when we were, there were some deep divisions in our district. And I think after that experience, we sort of lean in to get things done, not always love each other completely, because you have to negotiate. And when you can do it with respect and listen to all viewpoints, that's very helpful. And, and they needed to listen to us as well, because we have a viewpoint that's valuable. But on Katie's idea, when you travel around in your district, if you see ideas of how we can support each other in this situation, because it's not going away right away.
That's for certain.
That would be valuable, ideas of how we can say, "Hey, you're doing great," or "Hang in there," or whatever.
I mean, it's important. I mean, it helps when you invite legislators to come. I mean, we're down there, we're sitting committees, we're listening and, you know, it's always great when somebody from, I always look forward to when someone's from back home in the district. I'm always like, "Oh, good, now share your story, because it's what you told me, but I want you to tell the whole state." Because I think it's important that the whole state hears what you have to say. And I always like that. And I always tell people, I'm like, "Come down to Madison, if there is a committee hearing, or write your legislators, if you don't have time, or email, phone whatever it is to keep in contact with us, to tell us how things are." Because sometimes we can be calling and calling and then you're like, "Oh, this is so annoying, why does she keep sending me letters?" And I didn't, you know, I mean, but it's helpful for us to get feedback from all of you. And when it comes to respect, I wish we could legislate it. I would love to legislate it, because I think we'd have a totally different political atmosphere in the state of Wisconsin. Because if people would respect each other and look at each other as human beings and not as arch enemies, we could do a lot more. We could have a lot more people outside the wagon pulling it in one direction. But until we get to that, I mean, you can see that there's, what, almost 19 legislators who aren't running again? I mean, four or five of them, I think, are running for a higher office. But people are just, I mean, when you see the state assembly, you see 99 of us. And constantly, people will not get along, there's a lot of political maneuvering, more so I think than there's ever been. And there, it doesn't need to be that way, but it's all about controlling and the power and regardless, if you have a great idea, we're not gonna let you get it through because we want you to fail. And the thing is, is the only thing we're doing, again, it's like, we're just hurting ourselves, because when I introduce legislation, 99% of the time, it's somebody who said, "Aim to, can you fix this and help with this?" Or, "What about this? This is, you know, this has never been updated." And, I mean, it comes from the people at home. And I see my job as a representative to represent the interest of my district, to the state. So I go down there and I'll have an idea and they're like, "Well, it's Aim to Sue, so we don't want her to get reelected." And there's too much of that going on, when there's very good ideas. And so we're not even listening to each other. You know, then we're asking people to listen to the public, which in, you know, the way the, the way the state was drawn, makes it even harder to do that. Because people who are in very safe seats now don't have to listen to their respective districts, because I'm so safe, whoever you run, it's so safe, they don't have to worry about it. And that was a problem, well, part of that is the problem that feeds into this, like, "I don't respect you, because I don't have to, because I'm safe and you're not and we're coming after you." Well, how do you get past that, the political, to do the policymaking? And you can't if you don't have any respect, you're right, if you do not respect it. So how do we ask people to respect teachers or public workers, when even at the state level, where it's normal to have, where you're gonna have this fighting back and forth, and that's perfectly healthy, but it, it's now arch enemies? It's arch enemies that people do not wanna get along. And you try to break through that and see somebody, you know, for the person, you try to get to know them as a human being, learn about their kids or their grandkids or, you know, what they enjoy doing, and there is, it's just gotten so much worse over the years. And I've been in there 11 years, only 12 years, and I've seen it get progressively worse, where now people are, I mean, you could go at night after they were done and have a nightcap of a water or soda or whatever it might be, or barley pop, and they now, we, people don't even sit together, won't even talk to each other anymore. And it's just getting to the point where you, you can't have that. I understand that you can't have it, I try to reach across the aisle and work with people because it's good for all of Wisconsin. And, but it's, you know...
Well, the women in the senate, US senate, have been meeting together and making a difference.
Yep. It has been working.
Yes.
So, you know, maybe we can take, I just think that it is so contentious. It's all about power and money and the legislature, and people have forgotten why they ran for office.
Well, yeah, you hit there right on the head. And the other part of it is, is when Scott was here, he asked about unfunded mandates and for us to list, send them to him so that he could do something with them. And we came up with like six or seven that night. And it's like, you know? And I think I saw a list, I don't know where I saw it, but there's like two and a half pages, like thirty-five or thirty-six unfunded mandates that happened over the last two and a half, three years. It's like, that keep, wow.
And I think some lawmakers will say, like, I like letting the school districts decide the start date. I come from a rural area, I come from a farming background, and it was always, we always got out early, but that was always left up to our school board to determine what best fits the academy for your school district. And if you are a tourist area, maybe you want to start later. But I mean, a lot of kids are already in football and volleyball and cross-country, and they're already starting early, they're already there. And a lot of, I mean, when I go down to the Dells, I would, you know, they get a lot of European students. They're not even hiring our students. So it's like, let our school districts, you know, give you back your authority, give the school districts back the authority, the flexibility to run the schools how you need to run. You don't need Madison micromanaging. And too many times now we've seen that, I mean, the whole Milwaukee building where they could sell it to a voucher school now. Where they can come in and take the Milwaukee schools, the buildings, and sell them out, and then sell them to a voucher school so they can open up another school. I mean, that, that should never have taken place at the capital. That is not for us to decide. And it should have been for the Milwaukee school, school board, and not for us. But we're taking so much more local control away and micromanaging, which it doesn't fit. I mean, that's why we have school boards, because you will know what's best for your area. You know what's best for your community. And too many times Madison now is getting their fingers in, in the pot, and it's just making it worse. We're not fixing anything, we're making it worse, and we're taking away your ability to run the school district.
You know, you, you said that you think a lot of the legislators maybe have lost sight on why they actually ran for office, and I don't think that's true. I don't think they ran, they lost sight of why they ran. I think they lost sight of why they were elected. You know, I don't think that they've been, um, really honest about what it is they were in for, because I think if they had been, you know, they, they always knew exactly what they wanted. They didn't forget why they ran. But I think the people who elected them expected something different sometimes.
And we heard in one of our first trainings when we were elected to the boards, about being more of a statesman and less of a politician.
That's true.
Maybe Madison needs to be reminded of that, too.
It does.
But it's got to start with, you know, it has to start with people who are there for the right reasons.
Exactly.
Well, and eliminate special interests, because I mean, this whole Common Core thing, it wasn't the state of Wisconsin.
No.
It was money from New York and Texas and Florida. It was all a big dollar of money coming in that we're trying to sway and put all of this misnomers that Common Core is curriculum, it's non-curriculum.
And the voucher push is coming from out of state, too.
Yeah.
From some very rich brothers, we all know the name of. I just want, you know, public schools, we're now, um, competing against vouchers, and we're competing against profit, for profit. And I can imagine the uproar if we were to start in advertising like these other schools. We are at a disadvantage. No, can you imagine? Do we have to have an advertising budget now to compete? Because that's what they're all doing.
Taxpayers would not be happy about that in the least, to the least.
And they shouldn't be.
But you guess, guess what? Your taxpayer money is going there because of...
Because they are advertising, you're right.
Oh, big time. The other thing is, you know, um, I know this happens in Milwaukee, and I had the name of the school, and I can't remember it right now, but, um, and I do have it at home if you want it, but, um, in, in, in private schools, they'll take the, the student, and after the third Friday count, if that student's a little, uh, not performing up to snuff as they consider, or a troublemaker, they're out. They keep the money, and the public schools educating that person without any of the funds. I think there ought to be something that you don't keep at all.
You don't keep any of it.
You know, that has to be some kind of...
You don't prorate or something.
And I'm, I'm just so glad that the legislator is not meeting in Madison now, because, um, hold your breath, we don't know what you're ever going to do down there, because the governor wanted to expand vouchers to three cities because they had failing schools. That's what the governor wants. And like this, the legislature says, everybody gets it.
Not all of us.
Not all of us. But I mean, how do we watch, how do we watch something like that? It just happened overnight. I just...
How do you plan for it?
Yeah.
I don't even know how you're going to plan or start it.
And these votes at three in the morning, you know, when nobody's up or nobody knows about them.
And that was, that was part of the new rules package that we voted on, that, you know, we weren't supposed to be conducting business after eleven o'clock or whatever, but, you know, we went till four-thirty the other morning. I mean, we went around the clock, and it is, does a disservice to the people we serve because you can't, it's not very transparent when people are sleeping and we're conducting the state's business the darn of the night, right? I mean, it's pretty, pretty sneaky. Yeah, it is. And it's like, wait a minute, we're violating our own rules here. But then again, we don't have to listen to open, you know, open media rules either because some reason legislature thinks they're about that.
We should probably end on a positive note.
Well, I, I mean, it's really, I mean...
Things are still going pretty well.
And it's, it's disheartening for, for us as legislators. I mean, when I, I love my public schools. I do, I send my children to them. I have a high regard for people in education, I have a high regard for all of you who actually put your name on the ballot to be on school board and calling to run the school district. And it's, it's sometimes, um, people don't appreciate what you do, so I appreciate what you do. And I'm sorry that the state has fallen down on the job in supporting you and supporting our communities and our children and the families that need us most, because I really think that the state has gone backwards and not forward when it comes to public education. So I appreciate what you all do, and I always want you to, you know, to know that my door is always open, you know, if there are things that I can do, I mean, the flexibility, give you back your control, let you control your school district, and you're right, trying to be able to do things that you can, it doesn't cost money, that you should have that flexibility, and you shouldn't have those rights taken away. And, um, but it, I, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, I really think there is more and more of a push because of this outside money coming in and influencing campaigns and elections, um, even down to school boards now and county board races, that, um, out of state people are taking a heavy interest in those and trying to control that to buy people off who will support only their interests and not the common good for our democracy and for our society. That people have lost that way, and money now is the thing that talks. And so if you can have a, you know, your hundred and ten thousand dollar campaign financed by people from out of state, and you don't have to call people and say, can you give me thirty dollars or fifty dollars, then it's easier to take the out-of-state money and run your campaign and not have to worry about it. It's harder for people to call somebody up and ask them for money, but it's like, well, I don't have to ask anybody for money, and these people from out of state will pay for it. All I got to do is vote exactly how they tell me to. And, um, that's pretty disheartening that we can't even have discussions anymore when we disagree because it's predetermined when the vote comes out.
The last time you were with us was a consortium meeting. Um, do you like that avenue? We've struggled the last couple consortium meetings, if they make sense to have, because we don't seem to do much. But I think in this case, if we could get our legislators there and try to get Stevens Point and Marshfield, and even invite our congressman, congresswoman, to come to say, look, you're going to have a whole bunch of people that represent thousands of voters and, and students, would that be something that would be worthwhile?
I like those, too, because then they can, you can kind of compare and contrast, you know, different school districts. And, I mean, we're all pretty much facing that we need more money, we need to be able to help, you know, fund our schools equally across the board. But it helps because then it's everybody at the table, and everybody can hear, and somebody who might not have thought of something at that time, somebody out, another school district will, and say, wait, what about this? What happened with this, or what's going on?
Well, if you get invited to five school board meetings, there's only so many Mondays that you can attend.
Right.
And it just seems like it might be a little bit more convenient for the legislators. So maybe we could talk about...
But it's nice sort of common one-on-one, to hear what's happening in Wisconsin Rapids.
We appreciate your passion.
Thank you.
And your positions.
I love it.
It's interesting, though, because last month we were told that the state could adequately fund public education voucher schools and for-profit charities.
Wow. Where's the money tree?
I don't know what's, what we're... We were told that there's plenty of money for all three systems.
Lauren, that, that we sort of redirected the conversation, is there anything that maybe you had brought along that you wanted to share with us that you didn't get to?
Do you have any money?
Oh, now my blood pressure goes up. Man, again.
No, we need money.
I just kind of brought it all down, and I go, really? Like, okay, you can control it, but then when we start talking about this, because I, I mean, I see the families. I mean, my, my own family comes to Wisconsin Rapids, they go to Wisconsin Rapids schools. And I see that, you know, that the schools are struggling, and I don't, I want our kids, I don't care whose kids they are, they're all of our kids, they're all of a part of our future, and if they don't have that basis, they don't have a good foundation, we just, we're just hurting ourselves so much. But I just see the struggles, and I talk to educators, and they're like, yep, we, we buy our supplies and we just deal with it, and we try to do the best we can for our kids because nobody wants to see a kid fall behind. Because you just don't, it breaks your heart, because you just don't want them to struggle or have a bad school experience, so they write it off for the rest of their lives. You don't want that, because you want to make sure it's positive. And whatever endeavors that they do, but they have a solid foundation, so they can do, go in a direction it might be after high school.
The thing I don't understand is how it almost seems short-sighted. Um, you cut education, kids don't get the education we hope they have. Um, they don't, they're not employable. They're not going to pay social security. People who are funding, you know, I'm, I'm paying for kids in, in public school here, I don't have any children here in public school anymore. I'm happy to pay for it because I'm hoping those kids will become productive workers who will then, you know, pay into social security, so it's still there when I get to that point, you know, and, and like, I mean, it's all interconnected, and if we continue to cut public education on the employees, public sector employees who provide service, um, they're not going to have the money to spend in the local economy, therefore, you know, private sector businesses are going to be feeling the pinch because public sector employees aren't, I, I mean, it just, we're also connected and...
Well-connected. Well-connected, you're right, Kelly, whether people want to admit that or not, and really take the time to look at how we are. I mean, if people have money, they will spend it in the local economy.
I mean, somebody paid for school when I went.
Right.
You know?
I had a father of, he had six kids, and he said, you know, Amy Sue, he goes, we just didn't have a lot of money. He's like, we struggled, but somebody else paid for my kids. And he's like, now I'm in my, you know, my late seventies, he goes, and I'm happy to provide for somebody else's kids because somebody helped my kids through. And I'm, he goes, I don't have any kids in it, no grandkids in our school, but I'm willing to help because somebody did that for me. But it all comes back to respect and listening to one another and not saying, I've got mine, and, you know, you don't have yours, too bad. I mean, we, they just did a, a survey on that in Wisconsin, and, and people in western Wisconsin, southern Wisconsin are more willing to give. People in central Wisconsin, which I was pretty hurt, feel the exact opposite. I've got mine, I don't care if you have yours. And they said, it was a value survey, and about what you valued. Do you value public education for all the kids? Do you, what do you value? It was about value system. And they said, in central Wisconsin, we, our value system has, is different than other parts of the state. And that was really disheartening, because I always think that people where we live are generous and care about their neighbor. And they said, the survey we did showed that it was the exact opposite.
I wonder who they surveyed?
Pardon?
I wonder who they surveyed?
Well, I mean, you know, it all depends. Right. I mean, you can, you can survey that, but it was, I mean...
Pick your mail list, look who you want to survey, and come up with what you want.
It was pretty disheartening, because when they, it was just about a value system. It wasn't politics or, you know, who you're voting for. It was about, what do you value? Do you value helping your neighbor? Do you value, and, education providing for children, all children? And, um, and, you know, so that was, it was disheartening. I'll get you the survey, because one of our, one of my colleagues was telling me about it, he's like, Amy Sue, people of ours, you aren't very nice. I'm like, what are you saying? People of mine aren't very nice. Like, that isn't very nice at all. And he said, we just did this ser, value survey. And I was like, you've got to be kidding me. I always think that, I mean, when you look at the number of benefits, when people are sick, and that people come to it, that they're very charitable, and they're very giving, and people, I always thought people could, you know, they always gave at home here when they could. You know, sometimes people don't have a lot, and that's all they have, and that should just mean as much as everybody else. But I mean, it's really, I mean, it's kind of sad, but we're getting to the point where, I've got mine, I don't care if anybody else has it. It's a very selfish way to look at it, and I think that some people are now saying, well, yep, we have the money to send our kids to this private school, so too bad, I don't care if the public schools fail.
You forgot where we came from and what this country was built on.
Right.
As Katie once said, you know, we have to do the best for each student every year because they don't get a do-over. You know, it's like, oh, we screwed up last year, let's do it over. There are, there's no do-over.
So you want to make sure they have the best. Or maybe.
Well, thank you so much for coming in and...
Yes. Sorry, took so long. Thank you.
We appreciate it. We appreciate what you do for us in Madison, so keep up the good fight.
Well, thank you.
And we respect you.
Very much.
I respect all of you.
Okay, next we can move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Oh, let's just make a note that we did get our stadium.
That's a good idea.
Second of the motion.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the bills as printed. Can we please have a real call?
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Royall?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes. I just want to note that we have almost twenty-five hundred dollars on a rebate from Focus on Energy for boiler burner tune-up. You know, that's, that's a lot of money.
Pretty exciting. Okay, under new business, we have updates and reports on our virtual program. Take it away, Ryan.
We're deep into our planning and preparation for, with the virtual program for the following school year already. We have a number of activities that are, that are going on right now. Two weeks ago, we had a series of open houses and curriculum nights for our parents to come in and review curriculum and, and program options that, that we make available. Uh, and we did that, in, in particular, in conjunction with some changes and, that we're looking at with the program. Um, and the fact that, and what I'd like to with, with the brief report that I'm going to do, just a, a quick overview of some of the details and facts behind our program. Uh, for all of the, the students that are involved in our, in our virtual program, our staff writes an individual learning plan for every one of those students. Uh, we are currently drawing approximately, I'd say approximately a hundred and eighty-five students, 4K through grades twelve in our virtual program within the district. I say approximately because it does, it does fluctuate, um, over the course of the year with some students choosing, for example, we just added a student out at, at Vesper that was in our virtual program, asked to go into the brick and mortar program. Uh, changes like that, uh, have been from, from one week to the next, or one quarter to the next as we go through the year, and we have the opposite going on. We're in the process right now of, of a student at the high school for various reasons that is asked to shift from the brick and mortar program at the high school into our virtual. For all of those students involved, our staff develop and write an individual learning plan. And if, as we come off from spring break week, next week, our staff will be heavily involved in conferencing with all of our families to get those plans written for the following school year. That's why we had our open houses and our curriculum nights in preparation for that, because whatever that program may be, a lot of that planning and purchasing and prepping to have those materials available in August as we start school in September happens over the course of, of the summer in conjunction with the, the business office. We're also taking new student applications. We have a number of inquiries that are going on. It's, it's very difficult for me to project what we're looking at for next year, but I, everything would tell me that our program is looking to increase a little bit from, from where we are right now. By comparison to a year ago, we were at about a hundred and seventy-five students, so we're pretty close, a little bit more this year than we were last year. And, um, there certainly is, is room for, for growth. As our program has, has moved over the years, there are a number of changes that have occurred, and there's a little bit on that that I'd like to touch upon, in particular, when it comes to, uh, students that are non-residents in our program. I'd like to remind the board that, um, because our virtual program is a program and not a charter school, in order to take non-resident students into our program, we have to have agreement from the resident school and a willingness on their part to enter into what we call the sixty-six oh-three agreement. And you would have familiarity with that because all of those agreements for new students become, come before you for approval by you as, as a group. One of the big changes that have happened in our program over the years is some of the districts that were very closely involved with Wisconsin Rapids and entering into those agreements are no longer willing to do that. Early on in our program, many of our non-resident students came from Marshfield, Auburn Dale, and Pittsfield. And actually, those are three examples of school districts that are no longer willing to enter into agreements with us. While we do have students that come from those districts interested in entering our program, uh, because we are not a charter, virtual charter school, um, we're not able to take those students through a simple open enrollment process that happens within the state. Our program has shifted now to where actually most of our non-resident new students coming into the program are coming from the Stevens Point School District. Uh, we do continue to have students from Marshfield, Point, and, and Auburn Dale involved in our program because those districts did agree to grandfather in those students and those families that were involved with us, uh, originally. And so we continue to cycle through with, with those students and families that are And so we continue to cycle through with, with those students and families still involved. Um, one of the, the main updates that I want to review with the board, um, ties into a, a big evolving part of people for our program that we're looking for next school year ties a lot to, pretty heavily into the tutoring ser, services that we provide. The virtual program in, in its start was very heavily involved in our staff being able to go out to provide home visits and, and doing tutoring with students in the home. And we continue to do that, but very regularly. Uh, the problem with that is especially as we've spread out more and we're spanning from Marshfield all the way over to Stevens Point and even down into Adams Friendship uh, with our, with our current enrollment, um, as numbers grow and with the limited staff that we have, that's becoming a real challenge. Um, we're looking to try to move more of our tutoring as an onsite in-school offering that families would, would bring kids to our buildings to get more of that tutoring service to take place because actually the other detail of, of our program is we really actually have increased our WRPS resident students that, that are involved. Uh, we're getting more and more brand-new students to public education joining our program. Uh, we're running right now, I would say approximately about 75% of our students in the virtual program are residents within WRPS. With some changes in, in highly on...
Ryan, can we, can we just back up to that point in the fact that those students were probably either homeschooled or going through another virtual program?
That's correct. Yeah, they are, the vast majority of our students would otherwise not be involved in, in the public system.
Right.
One of the changes that happened from last year to this year is when, when Vesper, um, the sixth graders at Vesper went to the middle school, we adjusted our Friday experience accordingly. So this year we have students that, uh, you know, again, a quick reminder is all of our students in our virtual program are invited out to our elementary school location for Friday services with our virtual teachers. They get academic programming in the morning and then um, they get specials in the afternoon, which means they're getting physical education. They're having art class, they're having music class with our, our WRPS um, teachers in, in the building. Uh, we, we've seen especially in our early grades, an increase in the number of students that were attending those programs. Uh, we were actually planning on just having two sections, um, but especially in those early grades, the numbers grew to the point where we needed to have three different sections and, and three different classrooms. Um, space became a problem out of Vesper this year, um, because of the way in which, partly because of the, the 4K program running in the, in the morning, their half-day program running in the morning. But that growth and development is such that those three sections that we're talking about, our main virtual room out of Vesper is actually the conversion of what was the teacher's lounge. Um, then we use the art room as a classroom in the morning, we're using the music room um, as a classroom for those, for those three sections of academics that we have going on uh, with, within the morning. To try to do something more with our secondary level kids, uh, second, starting second semester this current school year, um, we opened a classroom here at East Junior High um, to make some, some onsite in-school building tutoring services available and to try to get our older kids into, into a building. Um, in, in years prior, we had older kids that were going out to Vesper along with the elementary students and because of space and just, you know, trying to run a classroom where you've got sixth grade all the way up through, you know, a 10th grade or 11th grade student just was, was not working for us on running an academic program. Uh, but wanting to offer some programming to our older kids, we have been piloting Wednesday mornings here at East Junior High, we have a classroom open in which our teaching staff is available. And I would say we're, we're running typically between eight to a dozen students that, and it's mostly grades six through nine that are showing for that it's an optional experience and it's all academic tutoring that takes place during uh, the morning half of, of the day. We are not running specials with that particular group. Next year, in, in preparation and planning, uh, we're actually looking to expand that type of arrangement into the high school. With actually the potential of having space available in, in similar capacity what we're pivoting at East Junior High, possibly being made available on a daily basis. Uh, there's a variety of reasons why we're looking to, to make this available, especially at the high school level. Um, having space available for students to come in on a daily basis is much more conducive um, to encouraging those students to take actual courses, regular brick and mortar courses at the high school, especially in, when it comes to specials. Because that is the, the areas that we see our students most typically wanting to take a regular class. They wanna take a German course, they wanna take art, they're involved in our music program. Though, the, the, the physical education class, uh, because those students that are pursuing a high school diploma need to meet the regular uh, course requirements that all Lincoln High School students uh, need to complete. Because again, a, a reminder that all of our students, because we're not a virtual charter school, our students are enrolled in our regular buildings across the district. A sixth grade student in our virtual program in Wisconsin Rapids is a Wisconsin Rapids area middle school student. A 10th grade student in the virtual program in WRPS is a Lincoln High School student. If they wanna pursue a diploma, they need to complete the same requirements of all of the students and that means physical education classes, for example. Um, in some cases, it's much easier for our students to get that with the regular course options that we have at the high school. Uh, that's a more of a challenge for them to pick up virtually than, you know, an algebra class or, you know, a sophomore-level English course. So, we're looking at that as part of an option at the high school level for next year. Um, when I come back to the elementary program, that is, is the, the biggest adjustment and change that we're looking for with the upcoming school year because we are actually um, reviewing and, and in the planning stage to relocate our elementary program to a different building next school year. Um, I've been in discussions with Tim Brahms and made a number of visits out to the Grant Elementary School site, um, because for a variety of reasons, it appears as though that that may be a good uh, location for us to make an adjustment and move for our program next year, not only our Friday experience, but in particular, um, when it comes to that onsite tutoring option that we're looking to, to make available. Um, having a site here closer to town because that's where most of our students are coming from now. If you take a look at the Friday experience, for example, um, while I taught before, early on in our program, we had a number of students from Marshfield and Pittsfield and, and Auburndale coming um, for that program. They're not coming on Fridays anymore. Um, we're down now literally one family from Arben, uh, is part of the Auburndale School District is coming to Vesper on, on Fridays. Um, whereas two-thirds of the students that are attending on Fridays are, are coming from town. To have consistency in location, um, not only for kids and parents, if we're gonna be encouraging them any day of the week, uh, to bring their, their students in for academic tutoring, um, it would be, it would probably be a smoother experience for everyone involved that they're bringing their students to the same location for that tutoring on other days of the week as they are for that, for the Friday experience. There's space available at Grant Elementary right now, um, that we've been taking a look at that would, would make for a good fit. And um, you know, the other side of this is we're, we are running into space problems out at Vesper as well. You know, that, that's the other side of, of this as we're reviewing this adjustment in, in our program. You know, as well as the fact that um, being located at, at one of the buildings in town creates better flu, fluidity within our program, being, having closer proximity to the secondary buildings. Um, e, even when you look at our staff, uh, we have, you know, Joan Hartman, for example, keeps office space or workspace down the, the technology quietly. Sometimes she doesn't wanna, we want everyone to know that she's working and has workspace with our, with our elementary school librarians, but uh, because so much of that tutoring activity um, that our staff is doing is right here in town, um, they're, they're bouncing back and forth and mostly needing to go out just for the Friday experiences. Um, the same is, is the case for our coordinator counselor, Heather Rasmussen, who has a workspace here at central office. Much of her work is, is right here operating out, out of central office. So, um, that obviously is a, is a big adjustment that we're looking at for, for next year. Um, and something that was in conjunction with just overall where we stand with the virtual program right now as we're preparing for next year, that I was hoping to give the, the school board an update on. So, that kinda covers, you know, a quick rundown of things that are going now and, on now and planning preparation for, for next year. So, if there were any additional questions, um, I'd, I'd take those right now.
What is the signal of the 6603 means we split revenue, correct? If a student comes under it?
The, the way in which we're out, we've been operating that is similar to the, we, we ask for the open enrollment rate, so we're, we're receiving or requesting two-thirds of, of the funding, correct? Or I should say we're asking for the open enrollment amount per student. The exception to that would be um, students that do have special education needs. We do let those into the agreements as well, asking the resident district to be responsible for those special education costs.
So do you think that those districts are actually getting those students into the classroom versus being homeschooled?
I, I think there's a variety of different things that are happening. If I, if I speak to Marshfield, for example, they, they're trying to run their own in-house virtual program to try to meet the needs of those students directly. I believe Auburndale has entered into, there's this um, Wisconsin Virtual Academy, I think they call it, it's a consortium of schools. It's, it's housed out of the Medford School District, but I think there's as many as 13 districts that have entered into a co-op with Medford to, to work in conjunction with that. I, I think that's what, what they're doing. Um, and I believe this last year, Pittsfield is similar to Marshfield, is looking at trying to work with their own students. I think we had 11 kids that requested to come to us, the new, this year from Pittsfield that we were declined on.
Well, thank you, Ryan. Any update?
So perhaps this is something we should take to Madison, that saying we do away with the 6603s, that you know, we wanna do what's best for the student, so that if they, you know, wanted to come here virtually, they, they could. On these, this, these ones, Auburndale, Pittsfield and Marshfield, I would assume we have reciprocity there, we're not letting our students go there either?
Well, we, we have not had those sorts of requests. It's, it's interesting that you bring that up, just to, you know, one other, one other detail to, to um, speak to in our program is it, and I know advertising came up before. We, we don't advertise our program. Um, everything that happens with our program really happens by, by word of mouth. Now again, I don't have exact figures, I haven't reviewed all of, all of it and Heather Rasmussen, our coordinator, is on top of this more right now because she's handling it directly, but she's telling me she thinks that she may have as many as 20 new students from Stevens Point that have expressed an interest in joining our program uh, for next year. That all has happened via word of mouth. Now conversely, on the other side, because all of these other programs are advertising um, what, what happens now and again, and I just got a listing for, you know, we know we're in the open enrollment period right now for next year, but at the same time, we now have year-round open enrollment. So, we do have over the course of the year now and again, students that, and parents that they see the advert, I mean, the advertisements are on, are on TV. They're uh, um, I, I recall NFL playoff time, watching football games and seeing, you know, the, the Wisconsin Virtual Academy running, which works with uh, with K-12 and these other programs running ads. We have parents that see that, um, they get on the internet, next thing you know, I, I'm getting, you know, a phone call from the McFarland School District that houses that, that virtual program, that so-and-so has asked to open enroll, like right now, like mid-year, you know, year-round open enrollment, they wanna switch to our virtual program in January. Little do the parents know that we actually offer basically the same program here. So our operation for us uh, is, you know, I'm, I'm notified when that happens and I call those parents and say, "Hey, you know, we offer a program here, would you like to do ours rather than leaving the district?" And the vast majority of them do end up staying with us. I just received a listing um, late last week on students within our district that have requested to open, through regular open enrollment for next year. There's about, I'd say it's eight to 10 students that filed paperwork to go to the McFarland Virtual Program next year. So what we'll do is, we'll be calling, between me and Heather, we'll be calling all of those families and saying, "Hey, we offer the same program right here in Wisconsin, these are our resident kids, you know, we'd like to keep you with us and, and we'll do our program. And oh, by the way, we offer Friday services for elementary kids, we're gonna be having, you know, a tutor room open at the high school and, and on and on and on." Because we found it, you know, that, that even these families that have contemplated leaving, when they learn about the, the flexibility that we have in our program, that's what we continue to hear about is the flexibility, the onsite options um, that we have available with our program and they, they end up staying with us. So that's a number of kids that end up staying with us that might otherwise, you know, leave, leave the district at that open enrollment rate.
Do we, do we have anything on our front of our webpage stating that? We have virtual school? We might wanna add that. Blur.
I mean, there, there's, there's a regular link to a virtual program.
Yeah, but I mean, when you open the page, it just should say "virtual" and then when you do that, I mean, the way search engines work, if you have that on the front of one of your pages, it will throw that page as a link. Or you can get a link and, and give a link to different things. But when search engines go out and you say you just put in your virtual schools, it'll, it will, they will find those and it may not be right there in the front, but if you scroll down, it'll be in there. So it might be something worth we put on the front of our page. I mean, I know we don't advertise and I wouldn't suggest that we advertise.
Do we know if other virtuals do an IEP? Are we unique in that?
Well, I mean, if, if it's special, if special education needs IEP, yes. What, what, for our program, we call it I, ILP, Individual Learning Plan, is what we in-house call for our virtual program. Um, I, I don't, I don't know about that. A little bit I hear about, about some of the other programs, I think they do some things similar to that. But again, that's something that we, we heavily stress and, and that's what we hear and that our parents want and what they appreciate our, about our program is the individual tailored need, that they don't have to do all caliber for an entire program, that, you know, they could do an Odyssey workhorse for this, they could do an event, a class for that and, and so on. You know, as well as again, I, I keep coming back to it and a big reason why we want to have especially our resident kids getting into our buildings as much as possible as we've been very successful with, they get in for that Friday experience and the next thing you know, the following year, guess what? They wanna go to the regular school. Um, you know, we get a new student in at the high school taking just one class and the rest is virtual, well, they're having a positive experience, next thing you know, they wanna take a full schedule at, at the high school. Um, that, that's something that we've had a very good success, we had success with and, and another reason why we wanna get our students into the buildings as much as possible.
So what, what would it take, I mean, what steps would the district have to take to do open enrollment? Would they have to chart, make the charter?
We have to apply for charter status, yes.
And there's no other way we can do open enrollment other than that way?
Anything else, Ryan?
Is the hang up there, "Hine for the Charter Status," there's always, you know, money involved with that, but if we're, we didn't need the money, we just wanted the charter status, you think we'd have a pretty good chance of getting that or you can't work it around that way?
Oh, you, you could do that. You, you could apply for a charter status without seeking startup funding.
But it implies a governance council?
Oh, that's true.
I mean, you need all those pieces in place.
You know, and, and one of the things about that Sandy is, I mean, there, there's good and bad that comes with that. Uh, you know, i, if you look at some of the, and I'm gonna use the MARE program that started a few years ago, they really exploded with, with interest in, in enrollment to the point where they really grew faster than they could deal with. And I, I mean, if you, if you pay attention to the media, you know, that they did run into some problems with the DPI and, and had to go through a new process this last fall uh, to maintain their, their state funding. Um, there, there's a lot of challenges that come to being a, a full charter program, taking open enrollment statewide. Um, we have to do state assessments for all of these students. You know, we did have, for example, last school year, uh, we had one student from the Green Bay School District, they did agree to enter into a 6603 agreement, so we had that student enrolled in our program. It was a challenge. We had to get her over here to do WKC testing. Uh, now that we're doing PALS assessment, assessments twice a year, we have to do PALS assessments for all these students. How do you do a PALS assessment for a student who's in our program from Milwaukee, Madison, Dodgeville? These are all, these are all districts that have been in contact since I've been involved in the program the last two school years, that have expressed interest in enrolling with us that, I mean, you're talking about needing to either have staff available that you're sending out to these locations to do these assessments, um, or have all of them come in to, to meet with us. That really, I, I have found is the biggest challenge with our virtual program, is needing to be complying with all of the state testing that, that we have to do with students that are coming from, from out of district. And, and the other thing frankly is the parents, uh, these families don't like all of the testing either. It, it's, it's a real challenge and a real turnoff to them to wanna have to go through all of these assessments that we're being run through.
Is that unique to us or would any other virtual school have those same requirements?
They, they have those same challenges.
Yes.
I, I, I've heard of the, the Appleton School, for example, renting conference room space at hotels in various cities around the state and then geograph, geographic asking those families to come in and do their testing there.
They were talking about that at convention. It's, it cost them, I don't know what, how many thousands of dollars to do that.
All right, thank you.
Best thing is just to get rid of 6603.
Thanks, Ryan.
I just wanted to share quickly, um, we get a publication in Rapids in the schools and here at the top of the poll, on the front page for our student artwork, um, we had during Youth Art Month, 12 students had their work on, on display at the Wausau Mall during February and then it traveled down to the Madison Capitol actually in March. And a couple of students from East and Lincoln had then some of their work go to the art museum in, in Wausau for the duration. But mainly I would point this out because this is written, this little article is written by our very own Maureen Hodgson over here. So if you wanted to take a peek at it, I just thought I'd point that out.
Can we get your autograph?
Well, I've already got her.
Thank you, Maureen. It's very nice. Okay, I guess if there's nothing else, we can move on to the calendar. Um, April 7th, we have the election canvas meeting at 4:30. Man...
That was today.
That was today.
That was today, it's the 7th.
Long week until Monday.
Anything go to...
Yes, tomorrow we have a special closed meeting and next week we have spring break. So, with that, we're done. Thank you, everyone.